Start the meeting for Dapple City Council Monday, August 2nd, 2021 at 8:00 P.M. First thing we'll do is approve the minutes from our last meeting. Do you guys have any corrections or anything on that that you noticed? If not, we'll take a motion to approve them. Move to approve. Lauren, second?
Second.
Bub, or Taylor, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll, I just have one addition to the agenda tonight. That is for the city of Streeter, I guess we'll just call it that for now. Under this? Under new business, yep. Sounds like someone else is trying to do it.
I can't unlock it.
It's not unlocked.
We can't figure out how to unlock this right now. Locking everybody out of the door.
Other than that, do you guys have any additions or anything to the agenda tonight?
I got the call on.
You want?
Yep, I got the do on here and then my research stats. So, I've motioned to approve the agenda for this evening. Move. Taylor, second?
My pleasure.
Jeff? All those in favor? We'll just go right into our visitors tonight. I got a few on the list, so. Harold, we'll just start out with you.
There's a few little short ones if you guys want to get over there, you can do that.
Jeff, no, we'll just move right in. Now that you can take off if you want.
Lauren, can I tell you, I can talk for a while.
Yeah, we got enough on our agenda today, so.
What we're gonna do is, if I give you this every once in a while, okay, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna just kind of build the wall and then you can start what I do the wall. In a theoretical word, governments are trying to fund the county. And fund the county means each fund is supposed to be standable. That means it pays its bills, it brings the money, its own money to pay bills. And the other funds bring their own money to pay bills, and they bring their own money to pay bills. That's the theory. In reality is, very rarely does a fund and revenues expenses ever match up. And what ends up happening is you end up with a bush. All the funds kind of work together to some degree. So every time you say, "How are we doing?" My answer is, if you are truly building walls, I can give you an answer. If you're just saying theoretically speaking, which to me isn't a qualified a lot. So from that perspective, every time you look at something, your net decision is still citywide here. And especially here at Citywide, if you don't have a bunch of fluffy stuff that goes back and forth normally, so you don't have to worry about slots or where stuff goes. Two things I handed out for you today are kind of highlighting the history of where you're at. There's a comparison from the five years, and then I've got the current years by fund. And at this point in time, the general fund, as you can see, is technically upside down. And it's because it doesn't have enough money to ever pay all the expenses. What you get from the street and the taxes will never cover the cost of the street and all administrative costs. So because of that, you've now lost that fund being self-sustained. The answer would be is, in theory, you need to raise property taxes. That would be the ultimate answer of how do we ever get the general fund out of the hole on its own. Now you also have in that fund an infrastructure fee. So you have, to some degrees over the past, built an additional revenue stream to cover that stuff. And again, infrastructure fee is multipurpose, so it's never had to be locked into a box where you can say, "We don't want to touch it." If anytime you want to do it, you could do that, but by all rights is, it hasn't ever been. When the project started, and the water is being pumped, at that time, there was built into the rates a surplus. And that surplus has allowed you to keep all your revenues. And that was the final intent when those rates are structured at the $25 was, it will give us a chance to let people have a break for a few years. And that's what you haven't done. So now when you look at it, you can see that from the perspective, I'm gonna go to that comparison sheet. And the comparison sheet really shows perfectly all your kind of sitting. So if you look at 16 and 17, 16 was, again, when the extra revenue was always built in, you were still living off of that per se. So the water, sewer rates, and the property taxes.
Hey, I'm sorry, do we all have that?
Yeah.
Sorry, Harold.
Everything.
It's a street you're gonna build. I got two of the same ones.
Okay, then maybe a.
I need one of them then.
Okay.
Now we're good.
I'm in the circle, Lord.
Okay, sorry, Harold.
When you go through that? I actually had one school I was working with, and I got down to the end. And I walked on expecting that guy to throw a report. And I was like, "What?" Sure enough, it was a different school. But she went and finished my talk. What's that? And she went, "Hey, bring your number in front of me." "I don't want that, I'll just listen." So I followed that down. So the comparison sheet, when you look at it, 16 was how the old Dapple was financially. It had enough money and nothing bad happened, you were going to be fine. But it was just on a fine. It was not a rebuilding for the future. We got a great thing coming. That was to allow you to just keep the status quo. In 2017, you did the big project with the water tower. And as you can see, you couldn't afford the water tower. That's under the equipment. But on the same way, if you take the water tower out, in 17, you were still fine. 18 was the last year. You can see where in a boring year, you can survive. That means no special activity done, no equipment breaking, no equipment bought, no big street repair. All those things are not factored into this. So from that perspective, you're saying is, "Okay, I've got that. How do I manage it?" And the managing that you've seen the last couple of years has been the erosion of the operating funds. And so you see the deficits. You've had to repair a couple of things, you've had to buy a couple of things. So in your structure right now, if you hear those words, you should get little hairs in the back of your neck, just go, "Ooh, this isn't gonna end well for us." Because we're gonna go backwards. Because we don't have money now to pay the money. So in that context, you start looking at, that's how it happens. And if you say, "I want to be able to take a couple of financial hits and still be standing at the end of the day," right now you don't have it. Right now, what you're saying is, "I can't take a financial hit." And if you said, "I believe we're good for a while," you could stay where you're at on all your revenues and hope nothing bad ever happens. Now, I think from a perspective, you're going to feel pressured and unsustainable. But that's ultimately where you're at right now. So you have had a nice run as a city. You've been able to keep yourself in this spot. Now the other side, people are coming in and starting to push up. And now you gotta decide how you want to push back. Because you can determine how you want to pay for stuff and how fast you want to pay for stuff. And if you want to prepay for stuff, or if you want to postpay. And that becomes this whole discussion first with the taxes. So when you look at the property tax revenue, you can see a pretty flat line. And if you look at the mill, unfortunately, a mill brings you 400 bucks, so it's not gonna bring you a ton of money. So it's not like if you're looking at property taxes, you're gonna find this cash. It would be a huge number of mills increased to try to get that to work. So from that perspective, you could add maybe three to five grand. Maybe three, if you wanted to push it for the mill, if you wanted to raise taxes. If you said, "Hey, I don't have a meeting because I'm not gonna sit there and have a discussion for three grand because it's not worth it," then you probably want to wait until such time as you're gonna really raise and have a discussion at that time. But ultimately, the idea of being able to maintain that, if you want to do that, means when you go down the road, you're gonna go take it to sewer water rates and garbage fees, and they're gonna take a beating. It's your choice. I mean, I don't think, there isn't any expense, and that's why when you look at it, everything has happened. Your core costs have at least not gone crazy and put you in a spot where you're going, "Man, I got a big hole to dig out just from where I'm at." Your core, your problems right now are on the capital side and how you want to address it. Because right now, they don't fit on this page. So you're gonna say, "Do I want to make the page fit?" Which means I gotta raise revenues. Or do I want to find a supplemental way to pay for stuff so that stuff never shows up here? But you can go through and talk about different choices, and it's always gonna come down to the same thing. Either you bring your revenue in, or you gotta kick those kind of expenses up. Because this page has now had its property pest years behind it. So as you look at things, tonight is the night, if you're going to raise taxes to get the thing into the company, to have them raise your corner taxes. At the same time, you have to pick a meeting date in September to talk about the tax increase. And this is why I see some cities go, "You know what? Those meetings are never fun. I don't want to have that meeting." Like I said, you could probably squeeze out three to four grand. So you maybe book the $47,000 to $48,000. After that, you would have to virtually have a board of people to raise taxes much more than that. So people normally usually like to default to the water and sewer rates. How much we need to raise each month to get enough money to pay for some of this stuff? Or do we take all this stuff out and try to find a way to pay for it, et cetera? That's kind of where you're at right now, is you've had, you're at a crossroads where if you say, "I'm gonna keep property taxes steady," then I'm gonna tell you, between now and the first of the year, you're gonna have a big increase in water and sewer rates, or garbage. Otherwise, you're gonna have a supplemental rate. Either infrastructure fee is going to go through the roof and try to cover these kind of costs, get supplement taxed. Because right now, there's five bucks remaining. You know, that five bucks has bought you time on taxes. That's exactly what it has done. That's under the other fees, so technically, you've been bringing in $58,000 in taxes and infrastructure. That's what's going in the general fund. So anything you're doing outside of the normal realm, you could either set up a new billing cycle and pay for them. And I've talked to some cities and they kind of like that idea, where they'll say, "So let's use a tractor. That could cost 12 grand one time to fix a tractor, didn't it?"
Okay, yeah.
So theoretically, you could say, "Okay, I'm gonna pay for that tractor. I'm gonna divide it, I'm gonna pay for it a year. So I'm gonna take $1,000 a month, I'm gonna divide it up by the number of people, and I'm gonna pay for that. And once that years up, that's fine. And then when the next thing comes up, that's what I'm gonna do again, and that's what I'm gonna do again." That way, from a perspective, you don't have people accusing you of overcharging. Because now we're back to the same kind of thing where either you're going to have to have multiple year incremental increases, or that they won. Execution, I mean. So now you're back to the same thing where you're saying, "And that's kind of what you did when the 25 came in." $25 came in, you needed probably about $18, $19 of that to cover the debt. So in essence, you raised operating revenues by six bucks a month. And that, and that's the last. So now, this is the thing where you could go, "Well, the six bucks technically work parts. Let's go six bucks again." Or you can say, "I'm gonna do $2 a year for three years, or $3 a year for two years." But in essence, you're probably gonna need to try to raise enough if you want to keep all the expenses. The choice you have is, again, there is money in sales taxes. Got 125 grand that's available. And again, if you want to contribute it to general operations, you can. In the past, as a city, there was a desire not to do that. Not that you couldn't, but that allowed you a chance to induce some economic development if it came available. It can also be used technically, for instance, with the street project you're going right now. If you want to spend it, but you can spend it if you want to do that. And that's really where, from the perspective of all this stuff, you can either try to keep airways a mush, have a semi-mush, or you keep some capital cost, or you can have in a total of which where just airways just kind of be paid out of and you start looking at the water and sewer rates when it comes out, or the infrastructure.
On your comparison sheet, where does the infrastructure fee show up?
That's another fee right there.
The other fees?
Other fees, like 14 grand?
Now where does the sales tax show up then?
It doesn't, because right now, you did not commit that to the operations. That's what I'm saying. You could, anyhow, say, "Heck with it. We bring in 20,000 bucks a year in sales tax. We can put it all every year into operations." And you can. Some cities have gone and they've done it a couple of different ways. They've either said, "We'll take half for street maintenance." Some will say, "We'll take some for tax relief." Virtually, I can do the infrastructure. So what you do with that is, it just says, "It's a general fund increase of 20 grand. It's got 20 grand more revenue, it doesn't have a deficit. I don't need to raise taxes because I follow the money." Or you can raise water. So that's what I'm saying is, in, that's why I tried to set it up because the general fund in and of itself isn't a problem, because you could easily just ship expenses off and all of a sudden, it's fine. You take all your salaries, you can take them to water fund. General fund is fat and happy. Water fund, weasem like before. Why would I know? You just moved it around. And that's why I do that comparison sheet. If you want to add sales tax, as you can see, it still would not come. Because that'd be the 20 grand compared to the 40.
So right now, sales tax doesn't what?
By 20, if you look at a second sheet, you better raise more than 40 grand last year.
Oh, all right.
Okay. But I'm saying, so that's the thing where, again, you can add another percent and get it to 40, if you want to. And some people say, "I love sales tax, because that's an optional tax, I don't pay it." Whereas the property tax, they gotta raise it.
And you said, "Okay, we increase the budget. We're really scrutinize your budget that we submit in what, October?"
Okay, if you want to raise tax.
Is there a limit to how much, how many mills can be increased?
Yeah, and that's where, her estimate is you could raise a total of, like, $49,000.
That'd be what, about five mills? Because our evaluation right now.
What she did was, she said, "Go to 105 mills and we'll give it a 46." I gave you two grand. Now technically, you could get airport library, that really is a pass through. So you're gonna raise it, again, it'll make library and airport happy, but as a city, you did nothing. Makes it, so technically, if you look at the evaluation, it's 400,000. A mill is worth $1,000, so it dropped the last three numbers. So it's 440 bucks. So if you raise three mills, you've raised 1,200 bucks. And you have people go, "Who raised three mills?" And you go, "I don't feel it, I didn't get any more." And that's the thing, that's why I was from here at. I mean, unless you could raise a substantial amount, where you feel that you would justify it. The one thing, what I always talk to cities also is, how do you balance who pays? And who pays becomes forced to, for the length of a school. It can be three, but technically, it's kind of four, taxes. And in taxes, then any example organization doesn't pay. So a school pays zero taxes. Schools say, "Yeah, we're just, we're only paying, we're just property taxes." You use special assessments. Everybody pays special assessments. One of those special assessments is, it is a flat tax. Whether you enter or the Taj Mahal, you pay the same. Where property taxes at least separates those people. Base water, the most dependable resource, and you may get it here around. Because it's easy to calculate, simple math. From this, I hit the L. And if you go water consumption, you hit the F. But each time you look at everything you tax, or every revenue you raise, you pick a winner and you pick a loser. And from that perspective, most cities migrate towards the water base. Comes for, first of all, going back to the simple math. I can take the number, just like I did that 12,000 example, 1,000 arriving at units, I got a six note. Second thing is, you can do it anytime you want, any way you want, any economy you want. Because there is no legal restriction on how, as a council, you can raise water rates. Because you're going through the process. You get one bite of the apple, this is your one bite of tax for the year. If you pump on it, you'll still save the 40,000 rain, and you'll have to find the money somewhere else. But that's where you're at right now in most perspectives.
But the big place we're bleeding right now is water and garbage.
Well, I see this, if you look at it, actually, there's one other factor. Your big water, your big bond that you have, it's a revenue bond. And the bond holder requires you to have 120% revenue requirement capacity on that bond. And they say, "After you create the bond, you can ship that 20% anywhere you want." So if you look at that statement, one of the reasons the general fund is upside down is to meet the bond requirement, we can't charge the salaries. But yeah, you still can afford salaries because you're overcharged for what you didn't charge that fund. So from a perspective, your problem isn't any specific fund unless you want to be that fund. If you said, "Find me a bad guy," I'll say, "Which one you want?" And you said, "Okay, it's a general fund." I'll say, "Share is pink, share me a white one for share." And you probably can't. If also it's a water fund, I'll say, "Man, I tell you, you just, by buying water, you block yourself in. And by the final payment, I put a noose around your neck." And if you want to, every time I see the comparison of water rates of local cities, what's an opponent in charge, what's street in charge, what's judge in charge? You have now lost any discussion about, is the water fund a problem? Tell them what, you've already conceived it and then decided not to think about it because your water rates are based on your neighbors. So if you were going on both sides to say, "What do I need?", it would be a very easy number. And it'll be very scary number. We can't raise it that much. And that's what I'm saying, you're gonna come to the point where it's probably gonna be between $6 and $10 over the next five years. And you could wait, and every year you wait, it's gonna be closer to 10 than it is 6. Because you give it another year of revenue, it'll be increased revenue. But you can wait five years and say, "Okay, in five years, you're gonna raise it 10 bucks." Everybody gets 10 bucks. And then people are figuring, and so they're, "Oh, okay, five years is long." And that's the part where, in this world, you're gonna decide who wins and who. This is, this is a state even. Now if you said, "We paid for the water tower. H&amp;H came in and we wrote a check on it." And you did, that was a huge check. And the reason you wrote that huge check was because people would say you overcharged them 10 years ago. And that money went to the bank, and that money that went to H&amp;H. You have now, in the structure, don't have H&amp;H money again, or the road money, where you can say, "I do want to say." So now we're back to, do you want to stay even as much as possible? Or do you want to have a cushion? Build that money back up a little bit and see if you can afford it. And these become, so that is, again, a different discussion, because I've had some cities will say, "I think we should write the check," and then build for the next one. Say, "Well, then you're telling a person that you're paying for two water towers, for two roads. The one you're doing, and the one you're gonna do for a while." And they're like, "Wow, that's a lot." Okay? That's the thing where this is the part about the long-term side effect. You start talking about, "I'm gonna pick winner loser, and I'm gonna pick the winning one. Before, after, am I gonna be a ready check? Should I write a check? How much money should be in the bank?" Now, there's 125 grand sitting there in a sewer fund, a reserve fund, which is available, can't be used technically until the bond's paid off, which is a long way.
And I, and I dreamt that at the same time, when we sat in here probably five, six years ago, and you were telling us, "We need to spend that money before residents come and say, 'Where's that? Why are we sitting on that money?'" That water tower is the reason we sat.
No, no, that's right, you know, water, oh, the water.
No, I just wanted to make.
The water tower, no, and I think what you do with water tower was perfect. For you borrow money and then get nothing, the fringer's service. But the thing is, this becomes, and I fixed out my, about the sales tax. Every time you look at a pot of money, it's either one-time money, or it's revolving. And we're gonna build that puppy back up, so it's gonna be one time in the financial cycle that we have. You needed to write that check on it, and you still did. That was the best thing you ever did, because there was, there'd been no reason it met both objectives. It, it, it kept that away. I said, "This is the part where," but that was the money you built up. And you've been holding your own. And that's why, if you had to do something five years from now, and if you said, "I want to write the check on it," going, you didn't have the same financial model.
Yeah, no, and we've been talking about that for a while now.
Right.
With water and infrastructure and stuff, yep.
And every time, you know, and it was interesting, because I like to walk, so before the meeting, I was walking around and looks like you're kind of hopscotching a little bit, when you're over the road, considering your back end. So is it, is the overall objective to do all of it?
We can't afford all of it.
I know, I know, see, and this is, now again, you know, you can only, because again, when you, when you, I look at that going, "Hey, these people have this nice road, hey, nice to walk back in it." But then I walk to other parts, I'm going, "Whoop." And I look, I thought about it, I said, "You know what? If they never get it fixed, they're gonna go, one way or another, I kind of paid for that. But my road didn't get fixed, right?" And you're going.
Well, there were several reasons.
I know, but I.
Those avenues were tore up when we did the sewer project. So that pavement is eight years old. Granted, it's not the whole width of the street, but it's a good share of, in some areas, a good share of it. And we wouldn't afford four million.
No, I know, absolutely. And you know, and you know, this, it's always interesting when you always talk about those things, again, when you look at the future, talking about stuff is, A is, what are you gonna do? And B is, how are you gonna pay for it? And C is, who's gonna pay for it and what's made? Those kind of things all come into play when you start looking at it, because, you know, I think about, it's like, I think you paid 34, must've been like when you did the road that goes to school, right? That hopper? Is that when you turned that back to gravel?
Over here, you're talking? We turn two streets into gravel.
Okay, but I'm thinking, but I also, the roads, when you first, when you, if you want to go back toward the school, if you come in from the east, you take that road.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, sure, we have the road.
Yeah, that's hopper, isn't it? Yeah, see, and again, remember, I remember looking, talking about that discussion, how that worked, and you're going, "No, again, even for 34 grand," you're going, "Whoop." And I know part of it, because again, I drive, I don't go to the school, and a few washboards.
Okay.
I got a little car. So I mean, so those kind of things, every time you look at it, you're going, "Did I do enough?" And all these things, the same roads, if one needs other roads, start breaking down. And I, I hear that discussion all the time. What do we do?
I think you hit it on the head. I think we got it figured out, what, blind hands, what we'd like to do. That was perfect.
I just want to make sure, I try to, to see what you're asking, trying to explain, so here.
We're gonna try to get ahead of the eye, so.
Can't keep me as, you know, the number.
We've got a tentative for this road project. And I think we're gonna, you know, put in an infrastructure fee as well.
Now remember, anytime you want, you can go fix, or you can move earlier. So this is getting back to the same thing about how if you believe, some people speak proportionally more. Because you are not technically locked in. And I'll tell you, one thing I talk about a lot with cities your size, with street projects is, the school, if it's assessed, does not directly affect their general fund. That's a separate assessment that they would have. So if they paid a little bit more, the other thing also does is, it's the school district, not the city, that pays for it. So if you want farmland to pay part of the cost, you assess the school. So if you want to get together with the school and talk about how kind of running we're gonna have, because that's ultimately how you can try to at least spread some of that cost off. Because that always gets you scared, you know? And you know, and I guarantee, if you're going to go in increments, that's fine, but then commit to the increments in total. So don't go, "Well, do two years, $2 a year for five years," and all of a sudden, if you're going, "All right, well, we better stop." And you're gonna stop. So I mean, City Goer, they did a 3% increase for, because they said, "We got a long ways to go." So we ain't here.
That's interesting.
We got properties in town where there is churned water, but the curb subs turned off, the zir line's capped, and there are just vacant blocks right now. Can they be assessed the infrastructure fee?
Infrastructure, yeah, because it has a. Infrastructure, yeah. Because it has nothing to do with water and sewer.
Well, it has something to do with water sewer.
No, it's not a water sewer bill, but it has nothing to do with the water sewer service.
Do they still, do they still get a bill mail if the curbs tops turned off?
Okay, so.
Here, there's two hundred feet of property. And I don't know what taxes on that are, but that house we tore down, there's four lots, hundred feet of it. And he's paying thirty-two dollars a year in tax. Well, we're getting about forty-five percent of that. So we got about sixteen dollars a year. That's all the revenue we're getting off of those four lots. He has no reason to develop it. Or do something with it. My understanding is there's some towns, vacant lots like that, you do get assessed.
Okay.
A pretty stiff rate.
You can get assessed anytime. And it doesn't do anything with water sewer. So if you do a street assessment. That curbs up and has their own. City bathroom, thirty dollars a month, big tires. As a utility fee, by the way, there was a utility bill. And they actually had a renter. Rented, they got a little groundy in the property, challenged him on it. Cause he didn't think you had to pay for the streets or he didn't, he thought the way it's done. Anyway, this, the way it came all was, if you have nothing to do with the water sewer. Then whether it's capped or available for services, you are not selling that service. That thirty dollars is for the road in front of you.
Hmm, okay.
And that's your five bucks a month right now is for the road in front of you. It has nothing to do with where they get a drop of water. Or send a drop of water back up. But you could if you wanted to. And again, see, this is really when you talk about people who, if the sewer line's available. And you ask, are your people will cap it? And that's when you see a lot of times when you see an individual who will buy the lot next to them. To turn on hours, they have a bigger yard. Then the next thing he does, he comes to city and goes, hey. I don't wanna pay any water. I'm, I'm getting water. That's grass. And you're going, buddy, that was set up to pay for that bond payment, so we can't discontinue. So those are the kind of things where in that process, but ultimately, when you look at it, there might be one final verbiage issue. But if your intent is to do it, you, you can, you can separate those two things and say, I'm talking about the streets and not the water sewer. And you can argue the water sewer if you have no bit, an old bit of water, you can make that point. And then the question comes is, if you have the ability and choose not to, what's your decision? So if he's got five over, he only chooses using them, you go, hey, there's everybody. You're banned from, because they're there.
Okay.
But that's the part where you have to raise ordinance.
To say that specifically.
Okay. Perfect.
But, so if you wanna raise, you have a head tonight here. If you do not wanna raise taxes this year. Then nothing needs to be done till October. If you wanna raise taxes, you have to set a date for a meeting tonight and then determine email. And then we'll send a letter to the county and then. But that's all you have to decide tonight is whether you want to have the opportunity or not. You are not raising taxes, but you are saying you might increase.
I guess that's up to you guys, but we've always talked about the infrastructure fee.
I think we're more inclined to do the infrastructure versus the tax.
Yeah. So I devil that and get here. Everybody here can see like when we were doing, oh, I can't remember losing here, but you can see that property tax, property values in town have. Increased dramatically. So at some point, do you have to? Do you have to realize that and adjust your property taxes accordingly? I mean, you're just looking at what houses are selling for now compared to what they were ten, fifteen years ago. It's pretty, pretty wild. But I mean, it's like, I'm not a fan of raising taxes, but at some point as a government, are you obligated to it?
Right.
We would address it.
We're obligated every year when we go through all that.
Yeah.
Well, and then, and we went through that and you could just see in the auto comparisons just how much it's coming up and it's.
But still, but they divided out with the budget. So if we move the, if the budget stays the same and the valuation goes way up.
Mills go down.
The mills go down. So it really comes out in the wash. But we are allowed to raise our budget a certain degree, right?
Okay, only if you have growth. I mean, your value, your tax evaluation up to this year has been very, very stagnant. Four forty, four forty-one, buck up, it goes up a buck. So. When you're near the top, that's why technically, what Brenda does, she says, if you go a hundred and five bills, you can get another two thousand bucks. But if also the valuation goes up fifty percent. And then all of a sudden, you can go twenty-five bucks. Because your valuation was your four forty mill to six six.
That's also when people call you, like, what the hell did you charge fifty percent?
Yeah, that's exactly.
I'd rather look at my tax statement and see five percent increase than every couple of years and then all of a sudden. Your back's against the wall and you have to throw fifty percent.
Well, you're saying like, well, you're ten percent. Uh, when I'm living with me, that was true, so.
And you're saying five mills was the cap? Is that what I heard?
So a hundred and five mills is the cap. So if you look at that sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what you can raise in total. So to give you an example, the other thing, you, you probably, I know the purchaser. Purchaser gets thirty mills and they could do another five if they wanted to call a, a portion rec. And I know with a little project going on, they might wanna do that. And that would then raise taxes two grand. And you're going, you can blame for it, even though the purchaser raised that. So I mean, and the same thing, if school raises it, you pay, you pay the price, then you get your bill. So you're going, I'm gonna get you now. I'm gonna get my cup. That'd be it. But again, this is where it's evaluations and then gets me to talk to county, say, when are you gonna come in and do a serious assessment revaluation? And then at that point in time, if you said, I'm not gonna go above forty thousand dollars, then you just cut your bills by twenty. And you go, why would you do that? Like, you raised twenty grand. But that's ultimately, in that time, you're having the same problem. So. I'm assuming if you're saying that, those things are coming in that high, they have to, they will have to come in and do it. Kind of controversial, they haven't done it for five years. They didn't even have an assessor. So it didn't change.
So you don't have to say, you can say yes tonight, but change it in September sort of to no.
But if you do that, then you get people mad and say, why did you, why did you get me mad and not do it anyway? And that happened last year. There's a stupid meeting, cause they come in mad as heck. I said, hey, they just wanted to have the opportunity. And he said, yeah, we decided not to. So it was, it gets you people mad for a month.
Oh, the good thing about Gackles, we're used to people mad at the same time.
All we do is balance the level of mad. Can we distribute the level of mad across six different things? Whether we can just behave.
Sorry. I guess, wait, you may, and if we're looking at a huge amount in the next few years. We should probably start getting there.
Cause when was the last time that we do anything as far as?
It's been a while.
I mean.
Well, Trish triggered that ten percent one of the last year. I can't remember that.
Well, ultimately, the state decides.
Well, that's what I mean.
What we.
Right, but we've never increased anything more than what. You know, I mean.
The valuations and the taxes are tied, but they're second. So you can talk about valuation increase, it didn't mean the tax increase, mill or bill. And somebody going, in the old days, always was, let's keep the mills the same and whatever increase they have, we'll get more money. Well, with the new meeting rule is, if taxes, dollars, go off a penny, you have to have a meeting. We didn't raise mills, we actually could mills. Doesn't make any difference. If the total dollars you're requesting from the county go up a penny, you have to have a meeting to tell people why you're raising it up a penny. And that's the thing, if you have that meeting where you get people mad, they talk about it, and you go, for a little bit of when we got from this. I'd rather not do it. And that's me with the infrastructure.
So like, not trying to hide anything, but like, say you, uh, say you increased your tax a little bit here. Like, so then instead, if we don't increase any tax, then later. When we decide with these infrastructure fees and all of a sudden, everybody sees their sewer wire and extras go up fifty dollars on the bill. It's forty or thirty, whatever it is. I mean, that's gonna be a big thing too.
Well, you know, that's a big one, isn't it?
It's just, it's just the thing that I'm saying, it's just, I like to see every, like, everything goes up in price. When you go buy it, top two bucks, bottom down, it needs to be a buck. I mean, it just, everything increases, so. Our expenses, everyone else, when anything's going up, I mean, there's no reason that a tax shouldn't slowly increase as well. I just, that's just my opinion.
We, we just need a motion then, tonight?
Yeah, then, well, then we'll be sure you get the, the paper done. So you just need to tell me if you wanna raise it and if you pick a dollar mark, it's two grand or five percent or three. Whatever you wanna use to say make a motion for that, and I'll make sure we're turning the thing down so you can get it. But if you said, if you don't do it tonight. You can't raise taxes out. Cause August tenth is a deadline to get it into the county, so they can get the information out to the taxpayers. So they have enough time to get ready for the meeting. So the sequence is, if you don't get it by August tenth, you can't raise taxes. If you don't get it by October tenth, you can't raise any taxes.
Yeah, she's saying, you understand that, right? Okay.
No increase, if, if nothing, you can't get any increase on August tenth. October tenth, you can't get any taxes, if you don't ever talk to the county.
So if we increase the budget. And if we don't approve it tonight, have that meeting, by August tenth, we could not increase the mill levy. Even though we increased the budget. Is that correct?
That is correct. And this is unfortunately. The way the state felt it was the best way to get the cycle done. So what you have to do is you have to create a number tonight that you don't even think will happen. And I go, that's where, there's a city patent last year and they had a huge increase. Cause they said, what's our, what's our potential? Put the full amount on that field and they cut it back to a third. So the people came, the first thing I said was. You guys are gonna be mad, only a third mad when any, because it's just mad. Cause they're not gonna go to four ninety, they're gonna go three. And they go, why'd you do that? I said, that's what the state said we had to do. We had to put the max. And that doesn't even obligated to it. Heck, you can still cut taxes in October. You can even go to twenty thousand if you wanted to. But if you go forty-two thousand, you can't go forty-two five, even though you can justify. Cause it told number forty-two.
You know, we sit and say, Jeff, you said four thousand gets us nowhere. Well, zero gets us even closer than nowhere, you know? I think it's not, I think it's a good idea to keep our options open. We maybe have more people not like it.
Thing is, so technically, you just have like a, if you want to use a, you can go up to forty-six. If you're never, you're ninety-eight mil, so you can raise it up to forty-six. Would you give you six thousand dollars?
Yeah, I don't know. Cause so basically, we could do a combination of, if we approved the forty-eight thousand tonight, forty-six, half of it were forty-six and then half of it needed. But we could still put an infrastructure fee on it.
That's my question.
Yes, and.
That's, so we can do that.
Yeah, I'd rather you can put it anytime you want.
The only headline is the tax.
That's right. This is your one bite.
Okay, I'm with you.
For future reference, we should have this meeting maybe a month before, instead of in the night, we have to have it.
Right, so you're educating us for forty-five minutes?
You have thirty seconds to make it.
Just so you know, just so you know, I did ask you to come to July meeting.
July meeting, okay. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah. You did it for too long. For the homie.
Well, I, I agree with probably, I want for the, a number, but.
Yeah, you guys, it's up to the council.
You want those, those extra mills? I don't know.
Well, you may as well go after them. And like you said, we can.
Max it out?
We can drop it.
And then figure out where our infrastructure is at?
Yeah.
Go through those numbers?
It'll give us some days to think about it rather than minutes.
I agree. Well, I make a motion to approve that.
Jeff, your second?
I'll say it.
Lord, say, Lord.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Now you need to pick a day for the meeting. You can do it before the council meeting if you want, that way.
We'll just.
So if you wanna do it like seven o'clock.
That's good. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
An hour earlier?
Probably a half hour earlier, whatever. I mean, when most do, because whenever I was gonna go, they'll say. You pick the time for that meeting and then the council meeting will start there after. Cause that's, that's do like seven to eight.
That's what we did last year.
Let's just do that.
Then all of a sudden, seven to five, you're going.
You get that at seven thirty?
Yeah, no, yeah, there. So if you go right after you leave at seven.
So that'll be September sixth.
Okay.
At seven, seven thirty, guys.
Let's go seven thirty.
Let's go seven.
That's a special.
Reason to get off.
Tax me. And then, so that's what we're gonna send back with, round out with the tax increase, let me.
Okay. And then eight o'clock, a regular meeting.
Well, I know the, the meeting will follow the tax.
I'll, I'll be able to talk.
Don't put a time on that, please.
September seventh?
Six, September sixth.
September sixth is Monday.
Is that Labor Day?
It is.
Oh, my goodness.
It is highlight green. Is that gonna be a problem for some big camper?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. You're meeting yourself too, I mean, obviously?
September, September thirteenth?
That's a good number.
It's my, it's my anniversary here.
You go on to someone that actually likes you?
Have to get your butt kicked while your dog's home, man. Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
You better, on your agenda, fix it, we'll fix it on the bottom to September thirteenth.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
Perfect.
All right, Nicole, you're here. I'm sure you gotta get back up there, so.
What's your thinking?
We'll move right on to you.
I just need to make sure that everything's set for Saturday. That Morgan and, I know Morgan and Haley had talked to you about if we need a special license, cause we're in the. The parking lot, correct?
Everything is set and ready to go on our.
Okay, so our needs are on the run. Now, let me throw a wrench in things. If it rains on Saturday, we are, we are.
You're gonna have it outside and have more farmers in town.
I won't pay for the van.
It's gonna be the best thing ever.
And what's the plan? You're gonna do that? The rain, you just solve all these problems, aren't we? If it rains on Saturday, I'm taxing being to see if we can move it to Legion. If we move it to Legion, how does it work with your liquor license?
Well, Legion has a liquor license there.
Yeah.
So we're good there?
Yep.
Okay? And then I just need an update on the Sundays and the two AMs. Did we get that all done? The, you guys were rewriting the.
As of August first, the state went in, so you're good. It's up to the city to decide what they wanna do. And that's my bad for being a little slow on it, but. We're obviously not enforcing it, so you're good to go.
Okay.
It's a little busy, so.
I understand. I'm, you're the bridge to the choir.
Not a good time to rewrite.
That's good. Okay, so, and then, so we're good for. Saturday, we say October two for sure. Okay.
So you're good with the state, you're good with us right now, is what I'm saying?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all. I need it. I'm done. Mine was, mine was not forty-five minutes, you're welcome.
I hope you learn to stop.
All right, we'll go to, who else we got? Dave Paulson, can we? You're, are you Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Water's yours.
I just wanna extend first street paving another hundred and twenty-five feet.
Okay.
I talked to.
You talked to me, I know, one time.
You wanted to go to the east hundred and twenty-five feet? Yeah. And look. That would get past my driveway. So that, so you weren't trespassing, you were driving on city street.
I know. Jeff, did you talk to Luke or are you aware of it?
Yeah, I know him and he's working with Luke. And we talked to the mayor, said. You know, I have to, have to counsel if you're gonna include it in the project, not include it in the project and. You know, if the city's okay with him doing it, he'll have to talk to the city on.
What, what I ultimately, what we're looking at here is, we cannot assess that anymore to the city of Gackle. Because we're at our budget, we're at our limit right now, and the little bit we do have left will be. because we're at our budget, we're at our limit right now, and the little bit we do have left will be by the fire department, possibly, or these other streets, too. So basically, what we're coming down to is you would have to hire them privately. And we cannot assess that for the reason being, if you would just give up your property, and we have a stretch of land that the whole city's paying for from that corner to an alley with one residence there, which we've had to make tough decisions on with four, five, six, seven people residences on certain streets already. There's a lot of...
There's, we can't set, we just can't bring that into what we got going on right now, as far as adding into our budget, because our budget is set. I mean, that's the way it is.
Yeah, they came up with the final numbers the other day, so...
And we're holding on to that little bit we have extra for everything that's, our contingencies are getting spent every time you run into a problem.
Unfortunately.
Right. And that's what you and I had talked about originally. So to hire them privately, you pay it for yourself, and then I said, we need to have that approved from the council, so that it's done right, and that we don't run into problems in the future.
Yeah, in the street, yeah.
As far as, you know, one or two inches of asphalt cracking up later, you know, we wanna do it right if you're gonna do it. Because it is still city.
Yes.
It's the right away, the city property. If I'm saying that right, is that, yeah? Yeah. It's ultimately up to the council, but that's, I know as far as our budget is concerned, anything above and beyond that we spend on that is coming out of what we're already bleeding from, as we just talked about for forty-five minutes, so...
Unfortunately, I agree, there's a, there's a couple of roads, there's been some people concerned that they were compromised real bad, that they didn't get in on to, and so they, they discussed this with us as well.
The worst part about this project is that we couldn't help everybody, and a lot of people had to be on the losing end, and it just, it wasn't fun deciding which streets got to be done, I can promise you that.
Did he give you an estimate, Dave?
About ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
And we can't exceed that bid price at all.
The two million, the two million's a dollar mark for the project.
That's it.
And we're there.
That's in our account, minus two percent of that already, that's what our bond, or...
So there's a, the two percent under eight percent fee, those come out of that, that's all, total, your total project cost is two million. Construction, engineering, contingencies, legal, your total project is two million. You do have some contingencies you haven't spent yet, but total project cost is two. So, and I don't know what that estimate is, thickness, I have no idea, you know, if Luke gave you that, or, I guess...
He didn't tell me how thick, but it was only fifteen feet, and that's what it is. That's what it is, now it's fifteen.
I don't know what you guys thought, I mean, that's, like I told you, I wasn't speaking to the council, but that's, I know what our budget is, and if we let ten thousand here and ten, you know, we're...
Then it's a wormhole, then we're gonna have six people in here next...
I'll do it with you.
It's just that it's a rabbit hole that I don't think we could go down.
Unfortunately.
I'd love to, too, but then you're gonna have ten other people in here tomorrow.
I wouldn't give you that long.
So...
That's how this works, huh?
Unfortunately, I agree, I'm with you on that.
What are you guys' thoughts on it, and? Yeah, I wasn't aware of the fact that we cannot exceed the two million.
You'd have to go back to the bond company, I don't get more money, so you can exceed, you're gonna have more fees to do that, you know?
And I agree, I mean, there's, it's a thin area. There's other people that like their streets touched, and...
I just, and I, it sucks where you're at, because that's a corner of the, you know, of the city to an alley, right, and we had to cut some corners on some main streets, and I just, I don't see it. That's my opinion, I mean, it's up to the council, obviously, but... Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to hire my own, if I was done right, I wouldn't have a problem with that, I mean...
In a perfect world, we'll have an infrastructure fee included here in the next year, and then maybe two years down the road, a year down the road, whatever, maybe more convenient to come about that right now.
Two years down the road, you reinforce it? Reunite first name?
No. There might be a better option in two years.
Is that supposed to a motion? Do I deny it?
Well, I don't think so, we just don't think...
They need you guys approval to do it, don't they?
Yeah, we'll have to see the specs and everything, and then we'll obviously have you guys look at it and get your opinion.
Has Luke give you, or just a description of what he plans to do, if he's prepping the gravel, and two inches asphalt, three inches asphalt, whatever Luke's planning, you know, whatever you're working with him on?
Right.
The width? Send that to the city, and it's up to the city to decide what to do with that. If they wanna consult me, we'll look at it, if they want it to decide on their own, they can look at it, too. So, that's how I would recommend moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I, sorry about that.
Twenty-five feet from that intersection, or they are going twenty-five feet, right? From the intersection?
Hundred twenty-five.
Oh, okay, so they are going twenty-five now?
Oh, no.
They're not, they're cutting it off.
They're stopping at the intersection, sorry, yeah.
Right at the corner, after I talked to you, I would have looked down.
Oh, it was, so they're not doing that, that intersection as...
Well, because there's a little bit of gravel in between there, and I don't know if the rest was gravel, or pavement and gravel after that, I can't remember.
No, it was, it was gravel, I mean, pavement, and then had sewer and water problems up there, and it tore it out.
There's gravel in between, so that's...
That's why they cut it off right there.
Yeah, because I took it, I've been working that and filling it in, keeping it from, getting crappy, so...
Well, yeah, I, like I said, I'm sorry we can't help you there, but it's just gonna be something that I don't think we're gonna wanna go down.
But, but you'll give me the proof, go ahead, you have them.
As long as it's up to, I, we're gonna consult them, just so you know, so it's done right, not that there'll be a problem, being as it is, City Boulevard, you know, it's...
If it's the same depth, it'll have to carry us, it'll have to carry us, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what you and I had talked about, there's gonna be some heavy traffic there, so it's, it's gotta be done right, or else we're just gonna have a mess, so...
Okay.
But we appreciate you coming in.
I'll have Luke pull it up first.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
First, this?
Yep. Warren's here.
I'll be shorter than Harold also.
Alright, see you later.
You got five minutes.
I'm doing five.
Do you have some bills for me, Joe?
Uh, they're being back, I'm thirsty.
Check, check.
Yeah, I just heard that you hired people, so you had to sit by me for a review.
We, we have an application for payment and engineering invoice for the July meeting that didn't get approved, so we have that in here, too. So we actually have two contractors' applications for payments, and two engineering invoices for today. And then a change order on the subgrade stuff that we've had so far, too. So, I'll wait for the mayor to get back.
That change order, that's for, uh...
All the subgrade stuff we've experienced so far. We've been talking about that twenty thousand dollar number, and everything we've gotten up to till, you know, today, and we're actually at, we're at seventeen thousand, that's where we're, we're at. So, a little better than I was hoping, so... And we're under on concrete, remember, too? So, we're, we're about to wash. So, um, construction updates. Um, things are, things are going good, they're back in town again, um, they're gonna get, uh, the streets that are done are obviously done, they gotta do, um, some restoration seating on those, it's too hot and dry right now, we gotta wait for that to get done. They'll come in and do all the seating restoration at the end. We've got about sixty percent of the project done. That, that doesn't include the patching that we're gonna do, there's some patching built into this project also, which is up to you guys, where we put that, we talked about earlier, and we marked out some patches, we'll re-mark those, make sure you're still good with those. Um, they're working right now in the southeast part of town, um, they're planning to get all that stuff prepped, ready to go, pay and go at the same time. So they'll come and get the base course in, the wear course in, and all that stretch. So, after this next paving mobilization, they should be done with all the main streets, except for the patching, which they'll still be doing this year, except for the chip seal, which will be next year. And then, and then also, if you're gonna add in a couple of streets, that will, we try to get those done this year as well, hopefully. Things are going well. Like I said, I've got two contractors' payments, because one didn't get approved last month, and I've got two engineering invoices, because one also didn't get approved last month. Um, I do have, this is contract change order number one, this is the first change order. This is for the, the subgrade issues that we've experienced with the extra subcut, extra gravel, GeoGrid. This is everything up to today, so we talked about our number, we hadn't approved anything in official contract change order, we were talking about twenty thousand bucks is what it would be. With it all measured, it ended up being seventeen thousand, thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. You've got about a hundred and fifty-two thousand contingencies. It would come out of that dollar amounts, but we're also under about twenty thousand in concrete, which we planned. So we're gonna be, we're still sitting at that hundred and fifty-two thousand in contingencies, give or take. So, um, that's, I, I would request that you guys would, if you have questions, we can talk about it more, I don't wanna beat it to death, um...
Change of motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one for seventeen thousand, thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Jeffrey, or second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. I have a motion for a contract application for payment. Okay, second?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Alright.
So we've got two contractors' applications for payments.
So we need a motion for application for payment number four, for four fifty-eight, four sixteen oh nine.
Nobody made that one.
I don't want to do it. Taylor, a second?
Who's second?
Larry, I hear it. Larry's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You knew it was coming, boys.
And then I've got two engineering invoices, too, for construction. Um, we're sitting well on our budget, too, and we're, we're tracking right where we should be. I, I might actually do a little longer, but then we'll be done with it, so, um...
Okay. Move through, approve the engineering invoice, twenty-seven, two forty-one. Lauren, a second?
Second.
Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, need a motion for invoice number two-seven, five-four-zero, so moved. Taylor, second?
Aye.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Question, are you guys happy with progress so far? I mean, I thought things looked good.
I think you have trouble, for what you got going on, and those, those guys, I've seen them out by Jamestown, I've seen them out, they've been running hard, so I'm, I have no complaints. I mean, they guys were good. If they're not here, they're somewhere else, so I can't complain.
And when they are here, they're working.
Oh, they're big days. And I'm happy with what they're doing.
They're, I think the asphalt looks really good, the seams look really good, you know, I'm happy with the concrete.
It's black, that's what I see, so...
It's black.
You don't know it.
It's, it's smooth, you can notice, I mean, when you drive it, you can tell it's smooth, right?
Kids like their skateboards, yeah.
Right, quality's good, sometimes you get bumpy asphalt.
Oh, they're right, oh, that's smooth as hell, all the way up to, it looks great, I thought they did a great job.
The middle seam is good, you know, sometimes you get a, a real bad middle seam, that you tell, it's hot from the pavement, so they're blending it well, I mean, that's, I have no complaints on the quality of the ground.
I saw this a couple of spots in front of my house, I saw a kid hit it with a roller blade, but yeah, he, like, yeah, one of them little bumps, I was supposed to say you could scrape it off.
You can scrape it off, it's just a little bit of a hill.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I noticed that, too.
I tried, kinda tried to shake it off, but it was stuck.
Might take a flash over.
Where are we at with that fire hall?
Still waiting on a, a concrete crease quote from them. So the concrete subcontractor did all the work in town, he actually, um, got a serious medical condition that he got diagnosed with. So, they were trying to get him to, in, back in town to do that work, doesn't seem like it's gonna work out for that, so border states is trying to get a, a concrete quote to do the fire hall work. When they get that, we'll bring it to the city or the fire hall, or whoever you wanna do that.
Are they willing to take a different contractor?
They are willing to take a different contractor, if you guys have someone to recommend. Everybody is busy right now, is their problem.
Well, the board is gonna start along that, uh, little part.
And S and S is doing that one, but...
No. And they got a guy, but I don't know nothing about him, he's out of Jamestown, the type of contractor, Chris Anderson.
I can, I can write the name down, I can talk to border states, you know, they're, they're generally, so anybody they bring in, they got warranty, is a little bit of a concern for them, so...
And I'll just say, I was a little shocked when that, when I got that, because there's no contractor's relation number on there.
Yeah? Okay. So that, that's one of their concerns, too, you know, if they're gonna bring somebody in, and they do a shoddy job, you know, I'm not saying this guy would or wouldn't, but, you know, they have to warranty it, so... We'll, we'll push him on, he's busy, so let's, we'll, we'll talk about it again. So we, we should hopefully have the pavement finished up this month, um, and then patching, I'm not sure if the patching will be done by your next meeting or not, but hopefully, the, the streets should all be done, the streets that we're doing. So, and we can talk at that point, if, if you wanna spend contingency money, what you wanna spend it on. So the final completion date isn't till next year, um, and it'd be nice to have all paving done this year. If, if not, you know, could potentially be done next year, too, but, we're gonna chip seal it next year, asphalt is porous, which you might notice, you know, and that's the reason we're chip sealing it. It's, it's armor coat for the asphalt, is what it is, so it'll be chip sealed, they'll sweep the chips off, and then there's another layer of oil that goes on top. It'll help hold those chips down, it's a bomb seal that goes on top of it. So...
Looks good.
Good.
Real good.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else from you guys? As long as we don't have to move forward with anything else, then yeah.
No, let's just wait it down, and we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I can direct you forward, Jeff?
Um...
What are you gonna do, Jerry, come on to?
The one thing that's gonna hurt.
Alright, we'll just move right into the, the city maintenance bill, what you got? Just an average bump?
You got a plan on the renovation, over on, uh, Third Street this week?
What does it deal with, like we did with Elm Street?
I called UPS, I had to handle this stuff. Well, I'm just saying, I've had to call UPS, but it sounds like, I talked to you a little bit today, there's some concerns with people. So just move it along.
If you can get it to an alley or a side street where they're not, hasn't been pouring up yet. That'd be great, but if not, then we'll, we'll deal with it.
Sounds good. If I have to help you gather garbage, you know, either once it's done this week, too, I'd have to do that, too. Whatever you gotta do, but, you know, we'll get it for you.
Alright.
So about the, the paper, anything like that, as far as moving forward?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, we do have an issue at the wellhouse. Um, their end of it, their valve is not shut enough, so right now, we're pumping at about twenty gallons a minute, filling the tank. So Saturday morning, I went down there, and the tank was overflowing, so I had to shut it off manually. So then I've just been, baby's sitting there, I called him today, he said he should be down there tomorrow when he gets fixed.
Okay.
But, you know, we're coming from the morgue, so...
So is it, is it pump company, or electrical?
No, it's southeast for the water.
Oh, they run that, the whole thing?
Nothing, the city has to worry about it, downstream?
Okay.
We might, we do have a guy coming tomorrow afternoon to check out that pump down there, just to see if it is, is that pump going out? They've been noticed a couple of times down there, when I checked in the morning, it's, it's, it's oscillating, you know, pump's going up and down, up and down. I've talked to a few guys, and they said that the pump could be possibly going out. So they are, they gotta, tomorrow afternoon, come down and check it out.
Is that on up on V F D?
Yeah. So you know, it's like, you know, when the pressure gauge down there turns on, at six, the pump pressure is on, and it kicks on at seven. Like, you know, when the pressure gauge down there, it turns on at six, the pump pressure is on, and it keeps on at seven. One, there's a manual gauge down there, with a needle on it, and the needle's just jumping back and forth. So then I shut the VFD off, fill the pump, and let it sit for a few minutes, I turn it back on, and it's fine.
Think you're sort of lies.
And we've talked to that guy from, where is it, the VFD?
Oh, Jeff, that.
Yeah.
Jeff Cole, well, he used to be Jeff Cole, now it's something else.
And we've changed the programming in it, and it's still kinda doing the same thing as it was before.
Who's coming for the mortgage?
That guy from, uh, works for the state, he's dealt with them before. Won't cost us anything, apart from coming down and take a look at it, so I figured I'd start there first.
Perfect. Which pump is it?
The other one.
The other one?
Yeah.
They're sounding like a wankie.
Yeah.
I think that's about all, yeah.
All right, well, appreciate it. Thanks, Bill. Our auditor's busy, I'll just come back to, uh, water sewage and policing, Taylor?
Nothing.
Streets lighting library, Jeff?
I haven't looked at three.
I've tried to look at some lights, have you guys any idea of any lights around? I haven't heard anybody comment, so I think I'm good.
I haven't heard anything, so, okay. Larry, air, garbage airport and?
No.
Lauren? All right, we'll just jump back to the screen, there are a lot of better ways.
I just stopped there.
Nope, you're fine.
It's kinda hard to get, um, look at every light one, I have to go through.
They touch.
You know. If I haven't even called me or, or, thanks for helping, so.
Thanks, Tom. All right, uh, what do you got for us?
I have nothing, you can just look at the new business.
Oh, okay, perfect.
I've got all the new business.
We'll go to old business first, then we'll get to that. So we had look over new right insurance, commercial, building and property policy that we got done with. Uh, you had brought up infrastructure fees, Jeff, I think we're gonna address that as soon as we get our numbers, which I've talked to Jeff.
I have to go to a scene meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good there. Uh, building permits, done. All right, so new business, we need permits for Patty Sandrum Minions to remove old deck and put up new. Okay, Tristan Black with fence, roof siding and windows. David Black fence, roof siding, window. John Miller for inside remodel.
He's doing some structural stuff in there too, so that's why I'm gonna get that.
So if you guys don't have any problems with any of those, we'll take a motion to approve.
Oh, move.
Permits.
Move, they should do that.
Lauren, a second?
Second.
Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Harold to discuss the anomalies, that we got done?
I think going back on that, I think we gotta, I agree with the infrastructure fee, and I think we really gotta scrutinize our budget. I was just looking back a little bit, we're all kinda just doing the same.
Yeah. We're gonna run into a big crossroad, like you said, with, why you, I mean, everything goes up, I think you just gotta do. Sucks, but it's just part of the job.
It is.
Yeah, everything else is, like you said, so.
I think they haven't done well for themselves. It's fixed time.
It's under our control.
Right. Well done.
Okay, so the bids for the plow, I don't think those came in like we expected.
There's two on there.
I know, I just don't think it's.
Not ready to pull the trigger on that yet?
I don't know what scrap value is, but I think RTS shears can give you.
Did you see that one, Ardell?
Four thousand, Lauren.
Oh, okay. Ardell, what do you think that thing weighs? Logan's twenty-five thousand. So if you got in there.
I don't know. The problem with the scrap is, you're not gonna get much hauling up there, just two of them. If it isn't shearied into less than three feet, then what's the width? And the thing is, there's pig iron in there. Those pumpkins are pig iron, they don't even want them.
Sure.
So.
I mean, I just, I would be.
Not be very, we could have called and find out. But I think we'd be surprised if we're not gonna get what we think we would.
Sure.
We can't go by the weight, it's not really getting down to the shit.
And that's why, it just looks like a big piece of iron, I mean, I expect a little more than that, but I ain't gonna pay that for it.
This bid's a lot closer.
Yeah, we're down.
But again, I guess I won't really know.
Okay. What did we do there? Did we just put it in the paper?
We put it in the paper, and we put, what that sheet you see right there, we put it up at all around town.
So today is the deadline, so that's the end, they're done.
More base.
Well, this, yeah, they're done, but we never put it in any paper other than Tri County News. We didn't go reject for one, I know. And the bottom of that is, deserving the rights there, that you can say no at any time, so you did write that in.
Do you just wanna be rid of it? You feel the push?
I don't wanna, I don't do it.
Okay, that's true, that's my opinion. Get it out there and be done with it.
What's it in there, how long now? Just gonna send it.
Someone's buying it, wants to buy it.
Torque converters out, we had at one time, General Diesel was down, I think they quoted thirty thousand.
Maybe they wouldn't buy it. Make a killing out of it.
They didn't wanna work on it. They weren't so sure if they'd be taking it, correct on it.
I guess I go back and forth with you too, I mean, it's, same time, it's not good, it's a good.
We got enough stuff to worry about, things to deal with, you just want it off the books.
I'm thinking, I would be opposed to that. What do you think, Larry?
I don't think I'm gonna fix it, I mean, if we need a blade, we're just gonna find.
Well, we kinda have a loader, that loader, we have blade on there.
We'll get by with what we have, we're, we'll buy something, we're not gonna spend the money on that thing, or rent one or something, or don't.
I, like I said, I don't know anybody who might.
Why not?
Only one that can.
Wants to buy it. I'm inclined to let him have it.
You guys are gonna shit me, he's out pushing streets to passin' you and Bill.
And all that, too.
They said this to Bill for twelve hundred bucks.
He's gonna get his twelve hundred bucks back, I just said.
What did Bill did in that volatil, the last time he ran it?
Oh, I think fifteen or twenty gallons or something.
Sounds like a little bit dangerous, fast.
If he slows down, there's no brakes. Long as I'm down to fifty.
Long as fifty-five.
Fifty-five. We make a motion on that, or you just let that?
Accept the bid?
Exactly, you guys gotta make a motion to accept.
I'm moving to our double ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Ardell.
Should we go for a big poll on?
Yeah.
Well, we can change that number to four three one.
Right.
Chip it away.
It's vanilla, it needs to raise that.
Okay. Okay, so the park board has come to us, they want to get permission from you guys to make sure that project they're doing for the, the little park, which is over by the tennis court, pickleball courts now, I believe.
South Park.
To cut through that north-south street that goes from the main park over to, which we are, it's not new pavement or anything like that. They just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with it, if we need a motion, to let them do that, but.
Oh, to get power over on that side.
Well, they need water over there.
Yeah, okay, that road isn't getting done anyway.
So we just thought we'd bring it up to you guys and, and make sure that everyone's on board with that, okay? I'm okay with that. And I, Lauren, I would, you must have talked to Beth today, she said you would bring us up to date on some of that stuff, so maybe now's the time to bring that up then.
Yeah, all she said, I guess some people have been asking where the funding is at and whatnot. They've got a, don't shoot, I didn't write it down. They're checking a couple of balance, and they're using that for operating, it's like forty thousand. They qualify for a fifty thousand dollar loan. Uh, they get forty-five thousand, right now they're sitting at about forty-five thousand in park donations. So they're basically, it's a goal, I guess. They get fifteen to eighteen thousand a year in tax revenue, which they can make that loan payment.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, they're gonna pay all the utilities.
It's a warming house, is that right?
Yeah. And. That was the one she mentioned.
She is, Beth Reiser, which is a park board member, had sent me this, and Lauren, you pretty much said most of it, about the fifteen to sixteen per year. Uh, the loan is for five years for fifty thousand, and that's why they wanna keep their, their park funds. Uh, what they have in their account now, forty-five thousand, so that's covered.
Right.
So they have enough to pay the loans, uh, they were. Did you touch on that? I thought they had, it's not, and then most of it's not a loan, it's a grant that they got forward, I believe. They raised forty-five thousand, which they're gonna update this thing out here, and that's after the Fourth of July, they haven't touched that yet.
A fifty-fifty grant?
It's something like, I don't wanna say for sure what it is, but I know, I know that's, a lot of it's a grant, and then they come up with the rest.
They had, they had to submit some more paperwork because of the increased costs of materials. And the way it sounds, when the grant was done, you know, materials were down here, now they're up there, that the grant is allowing for that. So it's, so the increased costs, definitely must be another grant on top.
Good for them.
And they can't start till that grant, or that increase grant is approved.
Okay.
Which I believe would be September's when they get the final final, is what I was told.
Something like that, yeah.
And then one thing they had add, or they had mentioned here also is, and it's something to think about, we're not gonna do anything tonight. They said they have no problem with the electrical bill, maybe the city would wanna help out with some of the water, things that the citizens using. And now, just something to think about as a council, I guess, like I said, we're not gonna go around anything tonight, but. So you guys are aware, there's, there is some extra bills out there, which they still can afford, but we're wondering if the city would be able to help out.
I think, and she had mentioned that, and my feeling on it is that we meter it, and once we know what they're using, then we address it.
Yep.
And I, as far as like when we had the poll and everything, I wasn't on back then, but was that the city paid for the water for that?
No meter on it. Nobody knew.
I think.
So the city paid for it, is what I said, thank you, I heard the answer.
We don't want.
We put one on if you can, but.
We don't wanna know what that was.
You don't wanna know what that was.
We build the fire hall now?
You can't, you're closed on it.
We don't build the fire hall.
Now the fire hall does not get a meter read.
But they should, you know, they have a meter and.
I understand.
Periodically, we should, just for the sake of knowing for recording purposes where the water's going.
Understood that. And that's, that's true.
We have to show them what that meter was, 'cause I, it's not on my records here, that I have. 'Cause I don't go into the, I don't do meter reader down at the park, I don't do one at the fire hall, I don't do one at the city hall.
You know, periodically, maybe the person should be, even though we don't build, but just for records.
Well, water logs.
Okay, so that's just, if you guys are all in grains, then they're okay with cutting through the street there? I don't think we need a motion or anything like that, as long as.
No, it's, it's not a new construction, and we've got, yeah, decided, we've got chip seal coming on it, I, I think it's gonna be fine if they get it done before the chip seal. My.
They can get it done before they're done paving it, I would be good.
Right, whatever they gotta.
Could be part of the patch job.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that's gonna be, yeah, patch thing, and then. So maybe that's.
Chip seal, you can be come next June.
Right. So if you get it done, we can send it over there.
Right.
You know? You don't get it where they want, wherever they want their shed, that's why they don't wanna stick it out of the ground either.
So we don't need a motion for this?
I would.
Yeah, we were just making sure, that's what I gave, to see if they would need one.
Yeah, 'cause I don't believe we made a motion when Pat did his, to his show, we just okayed it. It's in the minutes that we okayed it, so that's not.
Okay, but that's a good point, maybe it wouldn't hurt if they could get the water sewer over onto the, past the curb, onto the boulevard. And just cap it, and that way if it moves right here, they can pack it in.
Right. And give her the okay, especially.
Well, I do, you know, E-Walls are coming to do it in two spots, at the church and the house down there.
When are they coming? This, this month, I assume, that's the problem, I don't think they're getting the final final until September. But I'll sure check with Beth then.
Right.
And see if, if I'm gonna work for her, and stay in touch with you, I guess.
Right. If they have some sort of plan on where they need to tie them, or it's, the warming house is going.
They want it on the.
The water, the hour.
The water is.
The water is hours up to curb stops, and really that grant has nothing to say about it. And the sewer would be the only issue there, they could just pretend they didn't do it.
Didn't do it. You tied it. So now that, that, that avenue there, that north-south avenue, they got what, or they got sewer in that avenue right there by the park? In that particular room?
Yeah, I was, today after, because that was back when we started with the sewer projects. That was the first phase we did, we were gonna do it a little at a time, and that was the first one, that block was done.
So it is right there.
That new sewer line. And the third phase was actually the total project.
They're gonna be actually digging up on that avenue right there in front of the Zinker House, if they're gonna be tying to that sewer line. In addition to crossing the ditch, or crossing the other road that goes across there, accurate.
No, the water and sewer are the same on that street.
So it's on that street there, it's not going, it's not going down that.
It are.
Okay. Okay, I'm, you know.
The only, the sewer line is there is coming from Carol's house, or Carol's old house, Henson's house, and that, their sewer lines run underneath the pickleball, while we're ice skating right now. You know, that, that's where their sewer line runs, and then it runs into that one going south.
It's a good kind of big, but I can't probably do that in this case.
No.
You can't, you can't do that, yeah. Okay.
So we're, we're all in grains.
I agree.
I'll find out if we can make that work or not, from Beth, and then, I think it's awesome. We don't have to raise anything or do anything for them to make it work.
Sounds like they got a good thing going.
Oh, I was gonna say, when you're done with that, I do have one thing I wanna say.
No, you said you didn't have any.
Uh, no, I do, I.
I really do.
Um, if you look around, you'll see the new chairs, new desks, the new, new stuff in here. Before Kevin left the bar, I had put in for gaming money, discussed it with the state, we were allowed to accept it. Anything helps the government or cities out, so all of this has been paid for through gaming funds, city did not have to pay for anything. So we wanna say thanks for out of the nineteen fifties.
Makes it a lot easier to sit in here for an hour and a half.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.
What do you think about? I said it makes it a lot easier to sit in here for an hour and a half, huh?
Well, thanks for getting that done then for us.
There's three more pieces that are missing for over here, but we still have all the money, everything's been paid for.
Awesome, very cool. Gaps moving.
Well, and the same thing they did with the same gaming money paid for the city cemetery, have all the equipment as well.
Awesome.
All right, I noticed our water receivables really shot up again, huh?
What, for this month?
Yeah.
Lot more rain down there than it was back then.
What, you're looking at bills, I don't have.
Is that what we're going into here?
Yeah.
Or you had serious.
We'll come back to that, make sure I don't forget. Make sure you kick my ass. Okay.
What are you looking at, Lauren?
We talked this morning. We talked this morning, shut-off notices and everything are being sent out, I believe that.
Okay, there's two.
Some of them have been paid, correct?
Two of them, two of them in orange there have been paid.
Oh.
Okay. One of them, the Vivian, she is waiting, she just contacted me, she put it through social services, and they are gonna pay the bill. So should I hold off, I told her we would hold off on shutting her down, because she is going.
You heard from social services, though?
No. What, where do you wanna go then? She said the paperwork is in now for that, for the bill to get paid. The Guthmiller one, I haven't heard a thing, I even stopped by there, nothing. So, I would say probably if nothing's in by the tenth, maybe by the eleventh, we need to shut her down.
I would say with that one, yes.
And the other two did pay theirs up, people, and pretty much a lot of the late ones were getting theirs.
I think both of them, because in the first place, they shouldn't let her get that paid. She should have went to services or watch her.
She said to me she hasn't received a bill in three months, and I said, well, why didn't you call me? And she says out of sight, out of mind.
Only, that only got a couple of somebody.
Last month I did have trouble with like eight bills that were just missed, well, the ones I sent out, eight people called and said they didn't hit their bill. So I don't know if a bunch of them got stuck in a machine somewhere, or what.
Okay.
So.
But for three months, or two months?
Well, that's what I asked her, you know, because even before that, there was a bad check there that was given.
So when is the, like, the Vivian will be shut off the eleventh?
If she, yeah.
I hate to say it this way, but if you haven't heard from social services by then, and it's, we've gone through this before, we do not need to contact them, they contact us. It's what we've gone through before.
I sent, oh, I, cause I did send them a check or something.
We've gone through that numerous times.
We gotta quit giving in.
And I don't have seven vehicles in my.
And their damn excuses, and the trouble is, when I look at that name, her friends are using the same excuses on direct electricity. They're not getting the statements, well, how can twelve months' statement?
Conveniently.
They, they just got every damn excuse down there.
So I would say, if that's something that she wants social services to do, they should get hold of us.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
If not, then, like you say, do them a deadline, or do now?
When they're like, it says the twenty-fifth, but we don't, they don't get their bills to like between the twentieth and twenty-fourth. So how do you shut it down on the twenty-fifth? So actually, that bill that you see that I sent them to shut off includes the one for the tenth here. So usually if they get a shut-off notice, they're, that month is due the third, third, three bills.
It blows my mind.
So, let me get this straight, then the, that Greg, he's paid up?
Greg is paid up.
And the post office got a disconnect, but they're paid off now too?
Yes.
Okay. So just to go on those orange there.
Okay.
And then you'll see I'm telling the ones that were late, the yellow has paid theirs, and then there's the other half paid, but they had it till the tenth. And if they don't pay then, then they get a shut-off.
Well, the outstanding balances over here should, they just went down, I mean, they are getting stuff paid, they don't care.
Well, yeah, like, the disconnects, I guess, it's up to the council, but that's my opinion.
We've got a follow-up policy.
That's the policy.
Let's make it the rule, and then we can get it in.
Okay. Any other questions on those guys?
And you'll see, I did include gaming funds in the street project again, I'll keep that one going all the way to the end, so you all know exactly what happened in the account.
Okay.
Saving up for a Christmas tree, it's kind of working on the wiring here.
Before we get to the, to the bills, uh, we were contacted a while ago, I talked to Lauren each year, maybe Bill, about it. The city of Streeter has some concrete that they'd like to bring over to our dump. And what I was told today would be four basements roughly. Um, and with the street project going on, with all the piles in front of the concrete, is what you and I had talked about, it wasn't gonna happen. But now they're, they called me this morning wondering if there's a timeframe where if it's even possible to bring any of that over. And I don't have a clue on that stuff, so that's.
The border states cleaned up that pile they had in front.
Okay.
So that's accessible now. Who's doing the work?
Billy. Bill Holfer, the way it sounds, yeah. And then, uh, they, originally it was some houses there, but now there's a guy that's gonna be digging a hole for the houses in exchange for them taking out his concrete, as long as they find a place for it now. And I didn't give him an answer, cause I don't know what's going on out there.
Does the border state render all that concrete out there? Do they render it out there, or that concrete they pulled out of here?
No, it's not, it's just piled up open.
It's piled and all there. All I can say is hopefully someday we can get a crusher in. And Billy's good, I guess, that's why I asked who's doing it, I don't, you know, the worst-case scenario, we get a guy that's coming with a little bit of concrete and a wood and everything mixed together on a damn side dump, but Bill's good.
No, I was, I talked to Kay, and, uh, it's Ryan Fike is the other guy cleaning up, tearing down a couple of houses, and then his basement's getting torn out from hovers. And then their other two is getting excavated also by hovers, which was that one that burnt down. And then, I think it's one for the elevator, um, basement in that house also. And I can't guarantee if there's wood there, sorry. I won't be over there, so I don't know if there'll be wood there.
Oh, Bill, yeah.
Is that something where we would charge them?
They were wondering the price on that, if it's per ton, or how you guys wanna do it?
You know, outside, you know, cause if we let them do it, we gotta let somebody else, you know? That tears down a house.
As long as they put it where you want it for it, that's the big thing.
If there's stipulations, you guys let me know, and then, or if you wanna, I can give you Kay's number to talk to her, that's no big deal, I promise you she'll follow up on it, so.
Revenue is revenue.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we can get, you know, some of that, eventually, you know?
What do you think we should do? Use for a value per ton?
Not, not in.
Yeah, I saw you were gonna need our payloader to push it up and everything then, cause he's not gonna haul.
Should maybe somebody call around to other towns and see when they charged them for tons to be put in, or?
It's not, it's not the same as garbage, cause it's.
That's what I'm looking at, and I'm not.
If we're gonna have to hire a crusher in someday, and that's gonna come out of our pocket, and somebody else's pocket, I mean, it's just. I could come out and watch it run, if we let them put it in there.
Yeah.
Three ton, three yard. A yard of concrete is what, six thousand pounds?
About.
That's a good question. It's gotta be close to that now.
And if you saw them twenty yards.
I can't imagine two loads.
Or, or say fifty thousand pounds. Fifty thousand?
Four thousand. Four thousand fifty pounds.
Per yard?
Per cubic yard. Or a hundred and fifty pounds per cubic foot. So four thousand pounds a yard.
Which can be different, it can vary a little bit.
So probably ten yards on a truck, maybe a little more, and it can be more than a couple trucks in there, up for a basement.
I don't know, were they German basements? They could be ten.
Could be forty inch of the concrete.
Fifty dollars, maybe twenty-five thousand.
Rocks, buddy.
Does that sound like a reasonable price?
I don't think it's a good one. How much?
Ten bucks a ton. So if he's hauling fifty thousand, that's twenty-five ton, that'd be two hundred and fifty bucks. I think it should be worth that.
What are they, do you know an idea of what they charge to crush it, and what do we do with it after that? I don't even know.
They pay us for the concrete.
The last time when we had, uh, Matt Poro Anderson, uh, Sparky, we gave it to him, and he paid the crushing cost, and it was like forty thousand dollars. But at that time, there was a market for that product. I don't know about Jstone, I know right now, and this was last fall, when Ricky Nino was here, they were looking for concrete and Jstone. The trouble is, the rolling cost gets up damn high. Cause they didn't have any, you know, waste concrete available. RTS, I guess, you know, that's what I was hoping for, a guy can get like RTS in here, or some contractor that crushes it, and you take the product, be with what you want.
Well, that's it, there's still a market for that, there's just none of it around. So. Okay, that, I, that was different than what I thought, I thought, we actually made a little on it, but you're saying they'll take the product if you let them crush it?
Yeah, or.
We could keep it.
You know, we always, what, if we get a guy in to crush it and then try selling it, you know, I don't know how that would go, or I don't know.
I think a lot of people, I think one of the farmers would buy it. Put it on their big sites and use it as a road.
And that's, Shelly had a rebar in it.
Uh, most of them have magnets on them, cause they'll pull the magnets, the steel out of it.
Okay.
And, um, I know like Ricky Nino wanted some. Was the problem. They couldn't get together with Shelley, cause they wanted in the V lot, where they drive, you know, where it always got so damn soft. They dumped that in and pressed it down.
So two hundred and fifty a truckload, or two hundred and fifty total, fifty, fifty thousand pounds?
He was going out for ten bucks a, a ton, and roughly hauling twenty-five ton of load.
That's fair. I, I, I.
I can call Bill in the morning and see.
He might know.
Yeah, he'll.
And just see if he's.
Or the ballpark for rate. He could just wait your elevator before he.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just. Or just. Just call him and see if he's having that done before in the vicinity there.
I think that's fair.
So I need to, like I said, I'm sure we're gonna use our payloader to push it up and do whatever, so that's gonna amount for something too, so he doesn't have to haul his equipment over here. Well, like I said, I'll get ahold of him and maybe make a couple of phone calls in the morning, and then we can, if we're out of line, or if we're way under or something else.
Yeah, he might say, yeah, you're a little high, then we'll, we'll work off of that.
I don't think that's something.
Okay, so we can tell him that, yes, they can haul it over there? Can we have room, it's next week, I think she was even saying, okay, then? Okay. Perfect, we'll just approve bills then, and like I said, if we're a little bit off on something, I'll let you guys know.
I don't see anything on bills over there, I don't know. Motion to approve, I'll second.
Nothing, all in favor?
Aye.
So that was Jeff and Taylor?
Yep, Taylor second. In date and time, so we get this right, will be Monday, September thirteenth, seven-thirty is our tax meeting, and then.
Seven o'clock.
Seven. Oh, seven?
Yeah.
Okay, seven?
Uh, was it?
Yeah.
You said seven o'clock?
About seven thirty, huh?
What's that? You said seven o'clock, and then you run your.
Oh, that's right.
You said it's not your special meeting?
It's fine. I'll be your seven.
So seven o'clock with the city council meeting to follow, so.
There is a question.
Okay. And I don't know if it's seven-ten, seven-forty-five, it's to follow, okay?
And they don't take long.
So hopefully seven-ten.
Motion to adjourn.
I will look to adjourn this meeting.
Taylor second. All those in favor?
Mary, you second?
Mary second, yes.
Did you get a chance to talk to Joel Davis?
You guys had a good evening, though.
No, he was good.